This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Let's start with approval of the September 12th.
I'm so moved.
Second, thank you for providing them all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Stain.
Stain, one extension. We have two resolutions. I'm going to wait to deal with them right now, but I wanted to ask the committee. I'd like to vote on them separately because they're, they have separate actionable issues in the sense of supporting different House bills. Do you agree that we could, do you guys agree that?
Yeah, I think they should be dealt with separately.
I admitted Patty Stain, but I don't see her. Okay. Patty, could you mute until recognized? Just use the raise your hand.
Yes, I'm trying. I apologize. I'm trying to figure out how.
There's a little microphone button on the bottom of the screen. Just waiting a couple of minutes to see if other candidates show up.
What's Patty's last name, do you know?
C O V A L L I.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we can deal with, before we get, I'd like to get statements from people that are here other than King, the committee. I'd like to just say that there's nothing in, let's talk about the Freedom to Read Resolution for the library. There's nothing in here that I would change. So I'm curious if any of the members have any issue with the language in here.
I'm comfortable with the language. I particularly am concerned that people have access to things, lots of things, different ideas, and that is healthy for our society. So I would be in favor of the resolution as is.
You don't want to change anything in something you wrote?
You might have a different idea, you know, who knows as you reflect on something.
What I like especially is that these resolutions are in support, this one supports Julian Sears Bill S D 2673. And I like the fact when we do resolutions, we do it in support of legislative action. That to me is, makes our resolutions more meaningful. I will come back to them. I'm still waiting on other people to show. I just wanted to say the same thing about the. Second, I was about the East Hampton Public Library. I have no problem with this language either. Do neither councilors have any?
I don't have any issues with that.
This is the public library. So you're okay? Again, it supports, for people who may not have read it yet, supports Jake Olivera's bill S 2447. Senator Chris. Hello?
Hello.
We already started.
It's breaking into work.
I had to walk.
Okay.
I live soon.
So we have Skavali online and we have for the record, Ben Hershey.
Percy.
Laura.
Scott.
Scott, right. I was going to call you something else.
Linda Markey.
And Linda Markey. Okay. That's just for the record and for the minutes. So the city council.
We have one more.
I said Megan Harvey.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. You didn't either. Okay, good. As long as. Megan Harvey.
So what I'm going to do now, just for Megan and Linda's sake, we just looked at these resolutions and the city councilors have no reason to change any of the language as submitted by the sponsors. So I'm going to go around the room and ask you to give your statement regarding that. But first, I'm sorry, there's two statements that I'd like to read into the record from other candidates. These are candidates, right?
These are candidates.
That have emailed us. So.
One of them here.
One of them's me.
Oh, never mind then. Just read the one that isn't her.
May I ask, are we meant to speak to both at once or are we taking?
No, I'm going to do one at a time. Is that one, is that one specific to either resolution?
This one, this one here is specific to the library.
All right. Well, we'll start with the library then. Yes, councilor Goins.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Before we start, I just want to say a few things, right?
Okay.
The first one is freedom of speech is really important to keep this country running the way that we've been running the country forever, right? A few months ago, we received an email from the Massachusetts Supreme Court. Yeah, police speak time. We have to let people to say whatever they want. And I agree because of the freedom of speech, even when we disagree with the people that are helping to us. That's the beauty of this country and this is part of that, right? Recently, we've been witness how in our nation, we are seeing how governments and local governments are banning books from libraries and from schools. And that is, I will take it, I will say is a, is an attack to the freedom of speech of this country. I think the constitution is being clear and we have to defend that constitution on all levels. And these two resolutions are part of it. I definitely, we can see what is happening around the nation. Basically with the books there about transgender or talking about sexual education in our, in the nation and they're being banned, but they are not the only ones. You can see in Florida, they've been banned, banned some books, including really important people from Puerto Rico, like Roberto Clemente. They banned that in a book that talked about his, he liked his experience in United States and his life experience in MLB and they banned that book. So it's not just about transgender, sexual education is more than that. And that's why Councilor Denham and I, we both sit down and we are proposing two district resolutions to be reviewed and being voted to support two different bills in Massachusetts about the freedom of speech and no banning books at the public schools and the libraries in Massachusetts. Want to add something?
Thank you. We have two resolutions and Sam, right?
That's me.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Okay. Just for the records for people here. We're going to talk about, we're going to vote on them separately. If you want to address either of them at the same time, it's okay with me. We're starting with the library resolution because Mr. Sliz, one of the candidates, has written an email. So.
And I was selected to read his email, which I think is a good, a good thing to do. It happens to be short. He addresses Omar as councillor Gomez. I reviewed your email regarding availability of reading materials at the library. I don't see any issue with making books on different subjects available to the public through the public library. The policy as presented supports parental input as to the reading matter that the children will have access to at the library. However, parents do not necessarily accompany their children to the library. That being said, it seems to me that the certain subject matter should be considered age sensitive. He puts that in quotes, saying, and a plan ought to be in place to see that, to it that parents are aware of what their children have access to or are trying to gain access to in the library. And he signs it right. A candidate for school.
Okay. Let's go around the room. Megan?
I don't have many specific comments about the content of the library, specific one. Just to fully support the resolution as it stands, I am passionate that there would be no restriction of access to materials at the public library or at the school. And I'll speak again when we talk about the school one. But I'm glad to see that this is just being a statement that's in a resolution put out by the city. And I think as many of us can come together and say that this is how our elected officials feel and this is how we're going to treat education and freedom of speech in our city, then the better. So I appreciate where it comes from and how it was written and fully support.
Linda?
Yeah, I'm speaking to both at the same time.
That's fine.
Public libraries and public school libraries are essential advocates of free speech and intellectual freedom. They provide a space for people to explore, learn and engage with a wide array of ideas. Banning books is not only a threat to these principles, but also a disservice to the communities they serve. It is through the preservation of free speech and the rejection of book bans that we can ensure the public libraries continue to be valuable, inclusive and essential institutions in our society. And I have some bullet points. Access to diverse perspectives. Public libraries offer an extensive collection of books that encompass a broad spectrum of ideas and perspectives. These books provide readers with the opportunity to explore different viewpoints, cultures and ideologies, fostering intellectual growth and empathy. Banning books limits this diversity, stifling intellectual curiosity and inhibiting the free exchange of ideas. Promoting critical thinking. A fundamental aspect of free speech is the right to engage in critical thinking and thoughtful discussion. Libraries encourage individuals to engage with challenging or controversial ideas, fostering an environment where citizens can evaluate, debate and form their own opinions. Banning books undermines the critical thinking process and stifles intellectual growth. Preserving history. Public libraries serve as the resource stories of history and culture. Banned books often address issues and perspectives that are important parts of our past, even if they are uncomfortable or controversial. By banning such books, we risk erasing parts of our history and limiting our ability to learn from the mistakes and the triumphs of the past. Protecting intellectual freedom. Intellectual freedom is a cornerstone of democratic societies and ensures that individuals have the right to access, read and express ideas without fear of censorship or punishment. Public libraries uphold this principle by providing unrestricted access to information. Banning books not only infringes upon this freedom, but sets a dangerous precedent for the suppression of other forms of expression. Supporting education. Public libraries are key partners in education. They are a primary source of books and resources for students of all ages. Banning books limits students' access to valuable learning materials and during their educational growth and depriving them of the opportunity to explore diverse subjects and perspectives. As a candidate for East Hampton School Committee, I fully support the resolutions brought forth by Councilmember Denham and Councilmember Hopkins, Linda Markey.
Thank you very much. Sam?
Hi. So I, sorry, just take a second. I appreciate the initiative that you all have taken on both of these. I think I'm going to speak just to the library one at this, at this time. So when I moved, I moved to East Hampton just over a decade ago and we, my wife and I had, for those of you who don't know me, I'm transgender and you know, obviously a queer parent. My wife and I had a baby in 2016 and I remember looking for books that like showed families like ours or that like showed kind of families that my kid might grow up identifying with. And one of the things that surprised me at the time was that when I went into the library, those books were all kind of like put into their own section and they were up really high. And so I talked with the librarian about it and there had just kind of been a misunderstanding about like where those books were supposed to go because obviously there's supposed to be out where children can reach them. They're not just for, for, you know, kids who have permission of their parents. And so that was like, they were, they were really happy to get the feedback that I offered at the time. And I remember like being really happy with the outcome of that. And I think that a lot of people don't realize how, how librarians really hold themselves to like extremely high moral standards and it's like considered a value system. I have a lot of friends who are librarians. They have a value system around access of information by everybody and against censorship. And so I was really happy and I remain happy to see that our library really values that. So I'm glad that we're coming behind them as a community and kind of backing up the, the policies and the perspective that they already have. And I appreciate being invited to comment on this and I think it ties into a lot of the stuff that we're doing on school committee as well.
Laura?
I'm going to speak to the library issue first and speak to it as a citizen or not as a candidate for school committee because I'll get into that, do our second round here. I appreciate the resolution that you all put forward. What upsets me and what I am struggling with today is the fact that we even need, feel the need, excuse me, to be here and to speak to this. It is 2023. We live in a democratic republic. Very first amendment to the Constitution is the freedom of speech. So I would think it would go without question that candidates would not be asked to voice support, but that if anybody were to raise an objection to it, that they would show themselves their case. We'll leave that here for now.
Okay, Dan?
Well, thank you for taking the initiative on this. I mean, I agree with you. I wish we didn't even have to talk about this, but I'm fully against any kind of book banning. There's no universe in which this is beneficial to children on any level. So I think it's valuable to state our core beliefs and to stand up against, you know, this national trend for censorship, which it feels more about controlling children's imaginations than it does supporting their ability to, you know, be good citizens. I feel like having a fully functioning, flourishing library is a way to develop a good citizen. And I think that East Hampton children should be allowed to grow up in a, in a place where they can explore, stumble into things. A library is a place to accidentally find things. And that's good. That's good for your, for your academic interests. It's good for your intellectual interests. It's good for your ability to take on beliefs that you may not even have known existed. And I would prefer to live in a city and a district that cares about that, supports children on those levels. And I also think that like, this is like a family situation, a family question too. So I want to trust families to have the difficult conversations that they have to have with their children if the children do stumble into something that is complex or difficult. And I think that children can support them. I think that the school, people in schools can support them. The idea of it takes a village is real to me and I think that this is of support, that philosophy. So thanks.
Patty Kavali?
Thank you very much. I'm actually supporting the library resolution. The only issue I have, the only issue I have a slight issue with is the lack of placing age restrictions on some of the material. I would, I'd like to see subject matter sectioned by age appropriateness because I'm just concerned about children being exposed to things that they're just not ready to. I'm a firm believer of let kids be kids and let them enjoy their childhood. But other than that, I see no, it's just with the public library resolution.
Thank you, Patty. I just want to say, having been around the longest in this room, this is unusual that we have to actually, I agree with Laura, have this kind of session. But it's necessary because local government, local school committees don't always get the chance to come out and speak to issues that are out there. And because of media and because we live in a society where we're exposed to all of the news and all of the things that are going on, I feel it was appropriate for our councilors to put forward something like this. Number one, to make sure that our leadership in town is fully on board with the, against censorship in support of, of all of the issues that this is trying to address. Censorship is so anti-democratic that I cannot tell you how it can be supported by anybody who claims to support the Bill of Rights. It's just contradictory. So I'm very happy that the councilors did this for both and especially for the library. As to age appropriateness, I don't know who decides that. I hear the point that Mr. Sliz and Patty are making, but on the other hand, families have to stay involved. Parents have to get involved. They can't hand their kids off to libraries or the schools and say, you're the babysitter. I want to make sure you don't give them books. I don't want to have to do my job. I want you to do my job. If you, as a parent, have an issue with something, then you have a right to intervene. That's your right. It's never been taken away. But I don't agree with, I don't, I don't know how that works, the age appropriateness in the, in the library. I guess it's similar in some people's minds to age appropriateness for toys, but reading is not the same as that. So anyway, that's just my thought. I'd like to, if the councilors would agree, I'd like to move the resolution on the library right now and vote on it and then move to the school one. Do either of you have anything to say on the library one?
I certainly wanted to speak in favor of it again, to say, and note each, each person's contribution around the table. I, I think without the opportunity to go to a library, without the opportunity to see all sorts of different items on the shelves and a good selection while you browse or while you seek out information, we really can't begin to understand anyone besides whatever tunnel we live in. If we live in a tunnel, it's us. If we live in a tunnel that is our friends, if we live in a tunnel that is our family, couple of neighbors, maybe somebody who all shares the same idea about whatever, everything, let's say. Then we don't appreciate one another and we get to, we don't get to develop and learn so that we can work together. Because in the end, working as a team is what really matters as we look at our community, as we look at our city. So I agree. I think it's clearly censorship is a violation of the freedom of speech. And gosh, I'm glad a few hundred years ago, folks thought it important enough to be able to put into the Constitution. Thank you.
Patty, anything?
Yeah, I just want to say it was important. I don't want to speak for President Gomez, but just in our conversation, I think it was important to, you know, address this issue for the, for the reasons articulated in terms of free speech, cornerstone of democracy. And I think that something as particularly important as this is that it recognizes the contribution of the people, the librarians in our community who are educated in this field. They have a clear understanding of developments, particularly of young people. And I think that it's important to trust that guidance, right? They are trained to be able to identify important developmental materials and things like that that are in fact age appropriate. And I think we're making an assumption that that isn't taken into consideration. And so for me, this is, it's really important to, to name the fact that we have qualified professionals in this community who are trying to provide young people, right? And, and adults, right? If we're talking about the public library, to, to learn about others as, as councillor Quisinski was, has articulated. And I think that that's incredibly appropriate and important to, to name in this because the reality is, is I don't understand all the experiences of other people. And here's an opportunity for me to, without putting other people on the spot to explain their life to me, I'm able to educate myself. And I think that that's something that we often forget. It's, it's often the responsibilities of others to educate, educate ourselves. And also in terms of just a young person, you know, if we're depending on, if we're talking about transgendered individuals and as someone who's not transgendered, I think it's impotent for me to understand the experience of others because the reality is, is as, as Sam had mentioned, you know, to look for a book that is out of reach, right? That, that is so much about the library is people trying to find themselves. Whether it's traveling or self-help or any other variety of issues, it's about being able to find ourselves. And I would hope that as someone who's a member of the LGPTQI plus community, that, that someone who is cisgendered or someone who has identifies as heterosexual would take the time to understand a little bit about my life or challenges that I've experienced or joys that I have experienced. And within that, to be able to in fact recognize that I might be struggling and that they are willing to be an ally to me. And I think that those are, are all really important aspects of being a member of a community. And I, and I certainly would hope that anyone in this community would, would want that support or love or encouragement from any other neighbor.
Okay, said my piece. I'd like a motion to approve the resolution in support of the mission and vision of the East Hampton Public Library.
Sure.
Second?
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Second one is on schools and I'm assuming everybody's read these resolutions in their own. Again, it supports Julian Sears Bill S D 2673 regarding free expression. And since we have school committee member, school committee members and school committee candidates here, this is directly for them to, I appreciate for them to make statements on. I know it's hard, but you are having to address censorship, but it's out there. And I think that there are people who aren't afraid to say they want this and that book prevented from being read by students. So I'd like to hear where you stand on that particular issue and in this resolution. We'll start with Megan.
All right. So I have a little bit more to say about this particular resolution, given my current role on the school committee and as a candidate for next term as school committee. And there's a lot to talk about the sort of complex role of what a, a school committee member is meant to do and, and the role that they play. But above all else, it's to make decisions in the best interest of students in our city and to put their priority and their learning and their education at the forefront. And our job is to make sure that it sends to all children, all children, period, end of story. Not some children, not most children, but every single one of them. And part of that, you know, words, as you all have said, words really matter. And seeing yourself in a book, even when your situation, even when, when your situation is really challenging, when it's not really challenging, whatever aspect of your identity, seeing that you are represented in your school library and that other children see you and read about you and learn that you are equally valuable as every other child in the school is important beyond words. That is a primary thing we have to do for children. They have to see themselves in, in their education and understand that they are valued as much as every other child. And that, and that applies to every child of every race, ethnicity, religion, gender, identity, sexual orientation, family situation, culture, all of it, all of it. It needs to be in the library. And I appreciate that this particular resolution addresses even things like soft censorship, whether it's intentional or not. It sounds like we, you know, I had a great anecdote about seemingly like accidental soft censorship, right, of a book being too high for kids to read that.
like accidental soft censorship, right, of of a book being too high for kids to to read. That's really important. And we have to be able to talk about it, you know, we have to be able to burn up when we find a book that's out of reach and um or one that's missing. Um I just think, you know, words really matter. I feel like I wanted to say a couple of other things, but um school, school is a place where children's worlds need to get bigger and broader and wider and keep it scanty. It's not the place to have somebody else come in and decide what is and is not age appropriate, what is and is not too upsetting to to hear about um or read about. And um I feel really strongly that when we talk about subject matter in books as being too upsetting for some grade level or some age, we are are really highlighting privilege there. Um there are children who live in incredibly difficult situations and to say that that is too upsetting for other peers to learn about is uh it's just not acceptable. It's not something that we do. It also sends a message to teachers about what topics they can talk about in a school. Um so it's a it's a real slippery slope from a book ban in a school and as a school committee member, it's not acceptable nor will it ever be something that I would support. And I am wholly in support of this resolution. I appreciate that. Remember the other to to say it.
Thank you. Linda, you said everything you want to say.
Well, I just wanted to highlight it just our few notes. I won't read the entire thing, but just want to speak specifically to schools and to school libraries. One of the most important things that schools that education does is to expose us to different viewpoints, different cultures, different, this is the basis of being able to learn critical thinking skills, to gain empathy, all of the things that I believe we as a community are entrusted to give to our children, the ability to develop these skills. I I agree with Megan how very privileged it is to determine what materials are safe for one child to hear when another child may be living that experience, the child in that classroom. I I am a grandparent of two children in East Hampton High School. One of my grandchildren is biracial. She identifies as LGBTQ. She's she's somewhere there and I can't say that whole alphabet soup, but it's everywhere. And I was asked by her to run her school committee because she sees herself at risk. She's and she sees East Hampton as a community that was very welcoming and affirming to her when she moved here. And we want to continue to be welcoming and affirmative to every single child. We are entrusted with every single child. And so I believe that being able to do that, critical thinking skills are the, I think, for us to be paramount to everything else in our society, the ability to communicate different viewpoints. And here what I discussed, being able to sit, listen to someone who may differ from you, who may have a perspective very different from yours, but be able to listen to them, respect them, and try to find common ground to move forward as community. That's what we are. Someone here earlier said something better than I did, but we talked about, we are a community. And I am very concerned about who would decide what is appropriate, what is age appropriate, what any of that is because, you know, we be we 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 get it when we get it. And who are you, are you, are you, are you, or me, or that, to determine when exactly that needs to happen. And I fully support that. It is not the librarian that determines what books. It should be the parent because they should know what books their child checked out or didn't check out. And if it's the school library, and they come home with it, that's when you open that discussion and discuss with them. But it is not the school to censor because you cannot have these discussions. Bye for now.
Thanks.
Sam?
I I appreciate um what well, what everybody's had to say uh tonight. I um I think one of the things that stands out to me about this resolution and the way that it's written is that we're trusting in the professional expertise of the school librarians and other school personnel. And I that's um a really important, although like much less um interesting politically uh value of mine. Um I really do believe we hire people to do the jobs that we hire them to do. We hire them because they're good at those jobs because they have that expertise. I don't know everything about um being a librarian because I'm not a librarian. Um I looked at going to library school and decided I would hate it. And so I, you know, just because I'm interested in it doesn't make me an expert in it. Um we have hundreds of adults who run our schools and every single one of them brings their own professional experience and their own personal experience and their own perspective. And those perspectives and experiences are really valuable. And I think sometimes when we get scared about um about things not being done right, we think I've just got to do everything. Like it's got to just be me. We start like making that circle of safe people really, really small. And I'm talking to me meaning like we as professionals or as community members, also like parents, I think, do this when parents get scared. And I see this all the time in in my work in family support. Like when parents get scared, they make that that group of safe people who they can confide in really small and suddenly it's just them. And that's not, that's not how to, that's not a way that we can raise children in society. Like we have to be able to reach out and trust each other and trust each other's expertise and trust each other's perspectives. And know that like we're all working towards the same thing, which is um children who grow into adults who are um ready for civic responsibility, who can work in multicultural settings, um who are able to value each other and valuing each other's strengths and perspectives as well. So I see this as well as just modeling to um the kids in the community about one, one way that we can work together to solve uh problems or to address issues that we're we're scared of. We're not like retreating into our own um selves and not and walling everybody else off. We're talking about it together and kind of figuring out um how to solve the problem together. I would say, um I, you know, I'm the chair of the Policy Subcommittee. I'd like to to look into passing something similar on the school committee. I would like to, in the future, maybe partner a little bit more with city council on things like this. Because I think, you know, I I was on school committee prior to now as well, and I always felt so alone and just felt like we had no support from anybody else uh in town. And I just felt like uh everybody hated me and I was the only person in the world. And that is um not like a great feeling to have. And it's exactly the alienation that we're trying to avoid by making sure that our libraries are safe places for kids. So um that's kind of one uh one kind of uh look into the future that I'd like to, I'd like to just kind of put that out there for everybody to consider. Um and you know, just that, you know, obviously this is something that's close to me. My wife is a teacher. Um she once had a parent complain because she had a picture of us in the classroom, like on her desk. You know, and a parent said it was really, it was political and inappropriate. And her children, she was teaching first grade, so the kids were too young to know that, you know, there were people in same-sex relationships. Um and that was, you know, ten years ago, but I'm sure it's actually, it is worse now. So um, you know, I think about, you know, my kid, one of the reasons why we wanted to raise him in East Hampton and one of the reasons why we really wanted him to go to school here was that we really wanted a community where there were going to be other kids and families like his um and other other kids that were having similar experiences to him um growing up. And I've been really happy with that in East Hampton. I felt really at home here. Um I feel like um I feel like I get, sometimes we get accused of like wanting East Hamptons to be North Hampton. And I always say, if I wanted that, I would have moved to North Hampton. Like, I really like East Hampton. This is my home, you know. And um I feel like we've just been so lucky to be a part of this beautiful community. So I'm so happy about the fact that we're taking such a proactive stance on this issue. And uh when I watch the news or when I listen to the news and I see things that are happening in other places, just like knowing that I'm part of a community that takes this really seriously and is really, our values are really aligned with each other. I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Laura?
Right. So I want to make one note about my personal stance that would inform my positions. I'm currently serving on the school committee. I am also running again for the next term. But I think there's also an important legal point that I want to finish with. So my personal opinion, what informs my actions as a public servant on the school committee. When I walk into a public library or school library, I would not expect, nor should I, to find only material that I agree with or that I wholeheartedly subscribe to. Uh in fact, I would hope to find materials that challenge my beliefs, my understanding of the world, its history, its people and stories that evolved from that. This to me gets to the root of public education, of all education, in my opinion. The most crucial skill that we can aim to teach our young people, that we can continually revise as adults, is the ability to access information, think critically, form thoughtful conclusions and a more complex understanding. So that is what informs my actions as a school committee member. I just want to make a note for all of this, that there is absolutely no place for government to be restricting access to information in any public setting or any public institution. To be frank, it is patently unconstitutional, which in our country makes it illegal. If elected, I would not support any ban or restriction of access to books or information by any governmental authority in this city. I respect and understand why we are here discussing this, but I again want to raise the alarm for the conversation to need to take place.
Thank you, Laura. Ben?
Um and this is probably an extension of my previous thoughts, but uh when it comes to schools and students' abilities to access books, if anything, there's an opportunity perhaps in this conversation to expand the access to books and to almost expand the access to libraries. I think my son isn't good. He only goes to the library once a week. And um, you know, he told me like the library is my paradise. And then it's like, I want him in there more. If that's your paradise, you should be in there more. And it should be, we should find a way to get kids in the library more. Just like we should find a way to get kids up playing more and all that also. Um and I think that if you try to start censoring books, you're, you know, there might be a group of families who have a problem with a certain book or several books. And you want to take that book away from everyone, that is absurd, absurdity to me. I it it makes no sense to try to like pick and choose who gets to read what. Um I also think that if you if you start to uh censor books, you begin to bleed into the realm of the teacher and what they do in their classrooms. Because like, for instance, in Florida right now, there are teachers who have no idea how to talk about things that are really significant, both current events and historical, historical, you know, uh texts or whatever. They can't open up conversations about things for fear of retaliation and all sorts of ways. I don't want to even begin to tread down a path in which, you know, I think some, I mean, we have, we have job, people have jobs. I mean, we do the jobs. We can let teachers um, you know, do the work they have to do. They're they're our professional. We trust them. So um if anything, let's find ways to make books more prevalent in schools. Let's promote them more. I I reading is in competition with Fortnite. Reading is in competition with YouTube. I mean, this is real. This is I have, I I teach at Holyoke New College. I get freshmen in there who have not read a book. You know, like, like, we're actually, I I think a lot about how I should assign books because my students don't read novels. You know, like, if I can get them to read it in a semester, that's a big deal. Um so yeah, we have to find ways to make reading like a big part of what they do and let them have access to the stuff they care about and promote their interests. This is a, it's a question of uh, I think we're underestimating the integrity of children. I think we do this, public schools do this a lot, too much. Um and we have to find a way to like trust kids. And this this is potentially a big conversation and controversial in a way. But again, like you, kids have guardians, they have families, they have support systems in schools, they have friends, friends, families. Like there's these networks of support. And East Hampton is a place, I agree too with you, Sam, like, I love living here because I feel like this is a courageous community. We we are willing to stand up for things. So let's find ways to not shy away from complex conversations, difficult conversations, and let our children like step into some complex issues and be there for them. Um if they have issues or or problems, we can do that. I think we do not have to worry about age appropriateness. I mean, we should, we we do, but we also have to let kids experience what it's like to live in this world um and to learn how to, you know, think critically, to make mistakes, to get up off the floor and try again. Um and books can help them do that. So I hope we can keep talking about it. I I mean, I I wish we didn't have to, but I also think this is a great conversation.
Yeah, here you go.
Thank you. Um I actually, I'm, and I know you're all shocked, but I actually, I I agree with most of this. But the only issue again is I do firmly believe in age appropriateness. I'm a mother of four. They're grown. And my children were able to experience and handle things differently at different ages. I was always there to help them and plan things, but they still had issues trying to deal with things at certain ages. And that's where I trusted the schools, I trusted myself to be able to help guide them and expose them to certain things at certain points in their lives. So I'm a firm believer of age appropriateness. Um the other thing is whether I agree, whether I disagree with parents in this town, they have a right. They have a right for their children to be exposed to what they want them exposed to. Um and again, I'm not saying I totally agree with all of them, but I firmly support parental rights. So I think there's, I I and I agree, I do not, I do not promote being books. I do not want that to sound like that whatsoever. I am not against any groups. I am not against any people, anything. I I'm a very open-minded person, trust me, but I am a firm believer of parental rights. So somehow to support this, I have to see that supported. Whether we agree or not, and that's what I'm saying, I don't agree with every parent that I've talked to. Trust me, I like to slap a couple of them. But I do support their rights. So other than that, I I I I am for this resolution. I just want to see the rights of all protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you. Um one of, a couple of things I'd like to say, and then ask my fellow counselors if they have anything. One is you're all running for school committee. And I think the purpose of this was to look at one of the controversial subjects that's out there. When you're going to be on the school board, what are you going to set policy for? And when you set policy, when you do that, you give guidance, especially to the teachers. The teachers are everything to our kids. They spend a great deal of their lives in the classroom, talking with teachers. And they're going to be asked questions individually, or they're going to ask, the kids are going to ask questions of teachers. They need the guidance from you, from policy. And that policy has to be pretty clear. We don't censor. And I'm assuming all of you agree with that. Um to the other questions that are on the table, parental rights in in this resolution are not denied. They are not denied by this resolution. They simply put it in the perspective of how that's going to happen. Freedom of speech, you go to a school committee and you make your statements. But I want to caution you all because what's happened, I find, in all of the years that I've been on the council, is loud voices seem to get heard more than the silent people who agree with something that might be out there that maybe we are putting forward. So always listen when you're on the school committee. But remember where you stand on issues and how you're going to set policy, because your teachers are everything. Um and I want to thank uh our uh fellow counselors who put this forward. It had to be said, even though we wish we didn't have to say it. It has to be said because people out there do want to collectively censor things that their kids are seeing. They just need to be involved as parents and they need to let support the teachers. And you all have to support the teachers and your librarians in what they're doing. Counselors, Counselor Kuzinski, this is the school committee resolution, school resolution, the school resolution.
I make one additional uh comment.
Sure.
Look at this. I just, as we were all talking about this, um, you know, I think also, I mean, I wish that we did not have to talk about this, but um in my tenure on um the school committee, we have received emails and public speak comments about the content of books. So to, you know, it's here. Um it's in our Um, it's in our our city and um, yeah, I just wanted to to make that clear that I would would never um support censorship and it has come up. And it's going to keep coming up. So I'm glad we're doing this. Thank you.
In other words, it's not in some other community down south or someplace. It's here.
It's right here. Yeah.
Okay. Uh JP?
To address the general issue and the need to have a resolution, I agree it's sad that we find ourselves in a position where we have to have a resolution to reaffirm what is constitutionally the law, what is, for the most part, been practiced in the United States, for the most part. Uh, and where it isn't, I think it needs to be practiced more, uh wherever that may be, as we learn about more about our history and how we interpret history. That's what I'm speaking to when I say they make that comment. If we think that the children of our schools aren't going to find the material that someone wants to ban and not put in the library shelves or in the school shelves, I think we're fooling ourselves. I think if if uh if we're honest with ourselves and we think back to when we were their age, they're going to find what they find and they're going to think what they think. And the role, I think, of the community is to help bring the groups together as they folks find, as children find different materials. So having something available in the library, I think, promotes the opportunity to I'm thinking of character, I'm thinking of respect for other people as one sits down to a discussion of the subjects that are found. That takes place and take place in the classroom, in the library. And if it doesn't take place there, I think they're losing a big opportunity to right what I see as the wrong in our, a wrong in our society that is occurring across the country. And that's a lack of respect for those with whom we find ourselves either not in agreement because they're not aware, we're ignorant of their situation, or we find them somehow so much unlike ourselves that we fail to have respect. And I think the schools have the opportunity to change that. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Connor?
Finishing his. If you don't mind.
You're happy.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I will say thank you to everybody that's coming up to this meeting. Um, Laura, you're correct. This is 2023. And it's not just concerning, it's sad that we're still talking about this. We shouldn't. I guess we as a humans, we didn't learn anything when happened in the past. And we are making the same mistakes that we shouldn't. Um, Sam, the doors opened. Yes, we we can work together to to make resolutions, so whatever you guys need in this school committee. We're more than happy to to work with you at any level. Um, banning books should be criminal.
It is, in fact.
It is, it's a suppression of ideas. And and I guess we didn't learn anything about our constitution. Our constitution is clear, freedom of speech. We talk all the time that this is free country. Is it a country of opportunities? Um, but those opportunities are no opportunities if we don't have the opportunity to read everything that is available there. It's not. So I'm, and I have an honor of working closely with control of them in these two resolutions. It is personal I think for both in different ways. Um, as a Latino, as a someone who grew up in the colony, as a someone who grew up with a father who was segregated in Philadelphia, they they knows about what happened with books about racial, racial stuff. I take these issues personally. And I will do anything in my power to avoid this to keep happening.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, also thank you all for coming today and and voicing um your support, your thoughts. Um, yeah, obviously, this is an issue that is present for many other states. And I think on the forefront for this particular state, right? I think that people living in our communities and within the Commonwealth uh who disagree with it, to disagree with this are feeling really emboldened right now to be able to um uh determine what they feel is acceptable um for young people. And and this again is an affirmation of what is constitutionally acceptable uh and um and supported in terms of freedom of speech. Um, the other thing that I think again is was highlighted is the importance of um providing young people the opportunity to explore, to learn, to develop empathy. Um, because the reality is that as someone who works on a college campus, right, and working with young people who are looking for jobs, you know, the the work environment, there are expectations of creating inclusive uh work environments. And there's no greater time for young kids and teenagers and whoever else to be able to learn about acceptance and understanding and empathy and just a a a common decency towards the lived experience of others than than this moment, right? Whatever moment they are in, right, is a good time. And and people have said that that this is, that that parents' rights are not uh embraced upon with this. And in fact, we encourage parents to have conversations with young people that they are um have checked out a book that is um has new information to the, for them, or they're learning about other people's learned experiences. You know, that is an opportunity to engage uh in that conversation. Um, and and again, I I I want to affirm that our librarians are librarians are trained professionals who have an understanding um around the developments of young people. And they're not just going to haphazardly pick various materials, right? They they are aware of of those um books and materials that are um supportive of the development of young people. Um, and so I I wholeheartedly um support them professionally. Um, and I support the opportunity for young people to develop empathy, to develop an opportunity to explore new ideas and new ways of life um so that they venture out into the world prepared. So, yeah, so.
All I want to thank Counselor and President Roman and Counselor Bennett for writing these. They had to be written. Okay. Um, if there's nothing else, I'll take a resolution, I mean a motion for the city council resolution to support a freedom treaty. So.
Second.
For the discussion, are there none, all in favor?
Aye.
I encourage all of you. This is a rules committee meeting, not exactly the hub of communication. So please come to the city council. This will be brought forward at the next meeting if you'd like, if you'd like to. They'd like to be more public about it.
If they will not say something when we speak time.
Yes, it's during public speak time because this resolution is not a a public hearing like where we have. Well, some people don't understand that because they come and they thought, oh, I'll get an opportunity. But the opportunity is at the beginning of the meeting. Do you have nothing else? Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you, Patty Gavalli. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Be brave and ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to uh give our, to uh, you know, be in favor of this or not, to lend our support to this. I agree with you there.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.